All right, we're officially recording. A couple of housekeeping items. First of all, let me welcome you to the October 21st Board of Supervisors meeting for West Rock Hill Township. Couple of housekeeping items. First of all, the meeting is being recorded and will be available tomorrow on the West Rock Hill Township website, just as it always is after our meeting. And we ask everyone to stay on mute unless you've been given permission to speak. So that will help everyone be able to hear better because there's a lot, always a lot of backfill coming in on the calls. So having said that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Greg, are there any public comments for items on the agenda?
I have not received any emails regarding that, no.
Okay, thank you. Announcements? We are having an exec, or we had an executive session for legal issues, excuse me, on September 16th. And we will be having an executive session tonight for items related to real estate and probably executive issues. I'm sorry, legal issues. I also want to announce, as we did last month, that the voting location has changed. It will not be at the Township Building. It will be at the Jerusalem Evangelical Lutheran Church on Ridge Road, which is, as many of you know, is across the street from Fasagio's Restaurant. So there will be a sign, pardon me, there will be a sign in front of the Township Building directing people to go down there instead. You will see a lot of cars in the driveway at the Township Building that night because all of those energy-saving initiatives that we put into place, we agreed to last month, are going to be implemented on that day while the Township Building is closed. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. We had the September 16th, 2020 meeting minutes, the win plan review status, escrow release and vouchers, emergency services report, building zoning and building permit report, public works report, the, excuse me, the treasures report and payment of bills, and the fire contracts for signature for Telford, Trump Bowersville and Tyler's Port. Having said that, Greg, would you please present the treasures report?
Sure, the general fund is $785,647.01. The highway aid is $221,41.50. Open space is $1,162,161.95. Park funds, $25,638.51. The equipment fund is $18,436.13. Highway capital, $129.4. The streetlight fund is $36,102.17. The reserve funds, the general fund reserve, $371,532.37. Open space, Manderfield, $51,178.4. Sewage maintenance fund, $180,593.72. The stormwater fund, $7,500... Seven, five hundred... Sorry, $7,504.34. The escrow fund, $597,956.82.
Thank you. Before I proceed, would everybody please go on mute? I see somebody whose phone number ends in 6-0. They are not on mute, and I know that that could be causing some feedback. You cut out a couple of times, Greg. Okay. Having said that, other supervisors, do you have any questions or comments about the consent agenda? David?
I have a comment and two questions on the minutes.
Okay.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
You're breaking up again, Jim.
Okay, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The comment would be, I wanted to give a shout out and say thanks to Linda for her job well done under very difficult circumstances over the past seven months. She does a great job. Under, number five, under the manager's report, I believe that second was by Mr. Miller, not by Mr. Collingwood. We can go back and check the tape to see. The motion was made by Mr. Kaiser, but I believe it was that that was seconded by Mr. Miller. And under old business number one, Mr. Kaiser asked if PennDOT had addressed some issues on Cat Hill Road. Do we have any feedback or a report or an update on that old business?
I went out there, I went out there and looked at it. The ditches are okay in some places and are not okay in other places. It's fall, so a lot of times the leaves get into the ditches. I will remind PennDOT again, but it's not in great condition, Cat Hill Road. And some places, I just can't tell because of the leaves.
Anything else, David?
All right, everyone's frozen again.
All right.
I hear him, Jim.
Yeah, me too. All right, we'll assume David has asked all his questions right now.
I have, I'm done now.
Okay, okay. Jay, do you have anything?
No, I do not. As a matter of fact, I'd make a motion to approve these consent agenda.
Okay. Could you make that, could you make that motion just to have the items reviewed that David mentioned? Make the changes if necessary? Yeah, okay, thank you.
With, yes, with that correction, yep.
Do we have a second? I'll second.
No.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Confirmed appointments, we have none, so let's move into the committee reports. Planning Commission report, Chris, first time.
All right, good evening, everybody. PC met last Tuesday night. We had two applicants on the agenda. The first one was Snyder Butter Creek Builders. He was in for a fourth visit with a plan he's proposing. A 13-lot subdivision on just about 54-acre lot off of Camp Rock Hill Road. 12 lots would be on a cul-de-sac and one would front Camp Rock Hill Road. And it's the same report that I've given a few times now. He does have a previously approved P-loop design for that property with the same amount of homes, but due to the environmental challenges of the property, he would like to go with the cul-de-sac design, saving somewhere around 900-foot of roadway that he wouldn't have to put in, or he would have to put in with the P-loop. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, I heard somebody say it cut out. So this proposed cul-de-sac, you've all heard it, it's proposed to be 1,550-foot long. Our ordinance permits only 800. And PC has been and continues to be uncomfortable with the length due to emergency access and exit and also precedence. He is proposing a 28-foot courtway, courtway width, and will supply fire pools in designated areas along the cul-de-sac. And he feels that this should provide sufficient emergency access and exit. Again, PC would like to see a shorter cul-de-sac or some sort of emergency access to this project. So the pros of this plan, you know, from township point of view, is you're going to see less environmental impact. And he's got to do a lot of cut and fill to create this P-loop and bring down a lot of trees, apparently. The cons, you know, again, the cul-de-sac, it's basically double to what the SADA allows. Yeah. Pardon me. You know, and having that length with no emergency access, you know, you all remember what happened down there on Detwiler and Climber, and it's one of those things we'd hate to see happen again and not prepared for. You know, and it is worthy to note that this parcel was created by the applicant due to a prior subdivision. So again, planning commission members are all uncomfortable with this plan, so we'll see what, see what he comes back with. And again, he still has the, he still has the approval on that P-loop design, so he can do that if he chooses. So that's all I had on Butter Creek. If you have any questions?
I have no questions, Chris. Jay or?
I have none.
Okay, all right, continue.
All right, thank you. Second applicant was THP Investments. They came back with a plan for a 75-unit age-qualified development on a 16.7-acre lot, which was a previous site of precision finishing off of Lawn Avenue. At least kind of behind Stone Ridge there. The area of development, one area of the development has a, what we believe is a 700-foot-long cul-de-sac road, which falls under our allowable length, but they're proposing 20 homes on it and we only allow 12 under SADA. This was a concern at our first meeting, and this was our second meeting, so our first meeting, we had a concern with this. And they were proposing a walking path that they thought might be able to work as a, an emergency access and exit. So they did come back, they proposed a 15-foot-wide paved walking path that would connect the end of the cul-de-sac to an inner road allowing emergency access and exit. Four out of the five planning commission members felt that we could recommend this waiver on a number of homes, you know, it's 12, so it's eight homes over what the ordinance allows. So we felt comfortable, you know, knowing that we had that, that emergency access, but we're still waiting to hear from Fire Department Marshal to, you know, see if they're comfortable with it. So they'll most likely be back, back in with an official preliminary plan. Well, that's all I had on THP. Do you have any questions on that?
I do not, I do not. Jay or David?
I have none.
Okay.
I have none, it'll be interesting to see what the Fire Department has to say.
Yeah, yeah, I'm waiting to hear that too. Okay. Chris, what else you have?
One other thing, planning commission members received the final copy of East Rock Hills comp plan. And apparently there were no changes from the draft that we had seen that would have any impact on West Rock Hill Township. So we're fine with it.
Okay, good.
Yeah. That's all I have about fireworks.
No, no, not now. All right.
And that's all I have, and that's my report.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any further questions from David or Jay? Hearing done, I'll ask for approval of the planning commission report.
So moved, David Collingwood.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And it passed. Park and Rec report, Dave Rice.
All right, hope everybody's enjoying the beautiful weather and getting out of the park because it's been beautiful out. And I think we got a...
I have been.
Oh, it's been great. Took a walk there yesterday, it's beautiful out, so enjoy the park, it's been out. We've got some nice weather still coming down the road here. Hopefully it holds out for another two weeks. We got our, even though we didn't have September Fest this year, which was our, usually our biggest event of the year, I think it will be overshadowed this year by our Veterans Plaque, our Veterans Memorial Plaque dedication ceremony. We're just very fortunate to have the outpouring of help, sponsorship, money, encouragement of every single person that invested time, money to come out and to be part of this dedication to honor all the veterans that are named on the plaque, as well as existing member, veterans that are on the plaque. It's going to be a huge event, it's a huge event within reason, you know what I'm saying? But it's going to be a great event, looking for some good weather. Everything's coming together. It's just a little over a year, I believe, that we've been planning, so we've put a lot of hard work into it. Park and Rec Committee is phenomenal. We're all, you know, reaching out, getting all our pieces together, putting it all together. It's going to be a phenomenal day, it's going to turn out to be, you know, an exceptional day. So I look forward to it. It's just a little over two weeks away on November 8th, 1 o'clock. We're going to have that. We're going to have a couple of people speaking. All the names read off, we have a couple additional names, we're going to read them off as well, even though they didn't make it in time for the plaque. We're going to read those names off. We'd also like to see if it's possible, if, we're going to have photographers there, but we'd also like to see if the township would be able to, would we be able to record it so we could have it on YouTube? So we could enable people that could, that are not able to attend, would be able to view it?
Not sure how we would do that, Dave. We can't do it with the equipment we have in the building.
Correct.
You could do it, you could do it with a, if you check out your connection ahead of time, you might be able to do it with Facebook Live.
Okay.
And if you do it with Facebook Live, you can save the recording, or we could post that on our website.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Because it's a community event in West Rock Hill, so you can give that a try. Just take your camera over there and record stuff and pick somebody that can watch it for you and make sure it goes well. That'll work.
Okay.
Unless someone has a better idea. I, I can't think of another way to do it. That way, that people could see it live and you would have it recorded.
Yep, that's what we were kind of thinking, that way we could maybe have it livestreamed so people could actually be there without being there. So it's something that we could, you know, encourage people to, you know, view as well. So thank you, that's something we're going to, we'll, we'll get those pieces in place so we can do that.
If anybody had another way that Dave might be able to do that even more? I don't know.
Expeditiously?
Expeditiously or professionally, I guess is the word I was looking for. Yeah, just let, let, let us know, we'll make sure Dave gets the word, or you can contact him directly. Okay. Anything else, Dave?
Oh yeah, absolutely, we have, following that, we're going to have John Man Bench and Tree dedication on that same day, November 8th. Following that, a little further down by the Markley Pavilion, we're going to have that dedication on that day as well. We have, we also had Nate Ritter from Penner's Little League. He presented to the Park and Rec a drainage proposal, a French drainage proposal for, between the two fields, outside of outfield, of center field, and then we have just between. So we originally had a plan that would, if you see this, the trees, the three trees in the center, just outside of right field from the smaller field, we were originally going to dispatch the water out there. And then during the conversation with the Park and Rec, it was recommended that maybe we tie into the existing one, the drainage that is behind the tot lot, which is the extended, almost, it's almost doubled basically in size. So we're going to have, like we normally do, we have volunteers and we're going to get, you know, the help so we can get it out there and do that. It's the way it works out. Nate's online, I saw him here if we have any questions. But it was a matter of, we were going to request if possible, possibly donations as far as, since we are extended almost double for the materials, because we're going to have the manpower and stuff like that for the difference to tie it into there. Because we're pushing, I think it's almost 300 feet, that we're going to be a little over 300 feet. If that would be something that the township would consider, that would kind of alleviate. I mean, we were fortunate to have baseball this year, but we also cut back a lot of costs and we were kind of, we're, we're walking that fine line of, you know, dollars and cents.
Comments from Jay and David?
Yeah, I can wait in there just a, just a moment on it. I would ask, because I think that we are supplied pretty well with stone and stuff from the, from the quarry through township. I'm going to ask Greg to comment on that, you know, from, from his point of view. But anytime we can get somebody to do work like that in the park to improve the park, the labor, if we can, if we can find a way to get the materials, I think we should consider it. That's my opinion.
Right. David, any comments at this point?
No, I'm meeting and I remember that it being said that there were contractors potentially being available to help. So that's, as Jay said, that's a good thing.
Okay. I think, I think, I think we look into getting the stone. And, and then let's, when, when you actually work out pricing, Dave, let us, let us know how it all works out. And then we can, we can, we can't, you know, we can't do anything until we know exactly what it's going to be. Would it be this year or next year?
Yeah, we were hoping to get it done this year, that way it could get late and we could get the, the way it could get finished before winter, before we get any freeze. That way, come springtime, when we actually might have, hopefully we don't have the big rain. That's kind of what we're looking at. We do have, in that email, there was dollars and cents value associated with each of the pipe. I mean, Nate Ritter is online if...
My, you know, I'm okay with it. I've just, I, I want to make sure that like Steve, our engineer, has had a chance to review it before, and also, as far as the cost goes, I would like to see a breakdown once we know about the stone, once we know about any other, you know, items that have come up, right? And then possibly, if the next meeting is okay, then we can give an answer in the next meeting, is that all right?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay. I don't know that, Nate, we appreciate you joining, I don't have any questions for you. Does David or Jay or Steve, Bala or engineer?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the layout here, and he has down at the bottom there, if you're looking at that, it has the amount of money for the, for the pipe. It has the amount of money for the landscape fabric, it has the amount of money for the rock. And the total, the total there is, I think, $18,000 to $2,000 in materials, do you see that?
No, I don't, I'm not seeing that on the screen.
Okay, that's, that's under, in the, in the Park and Rec, it's under the Penner's Little League Proposed French Drain.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll go back and look at that. But if Dave is okay with us waiting till next month, that's, that's okay, because we'll have time to review it and make sure everything's firmed up. Steve, have you looked at it yet?
I have not really looked at it, other than just seeing it in the packet. Nothing jumps out to me to be a problem, but I'll certainly take a look at it and touch base with Dave if there's any questions.
Okay. Okay with Dave and you, Jay and Dave, David, I, I would just prefer that we bring this up next month and it, I think it'll be a no-brainer, but we'll see. And like I said, Nate, do you have anything you want to add or? You're on mute.
No, I'm pretty sure that Dave covered most of it there. The initial cost, Jay, was what was in that packet. After Parks and Rec asked for the extended length, I did update that proposal. Now the costs are 23,000 to 3,000 to go the 565 feet is what I measured out.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, great, we can put that on the agenda for next month under Park and Rec and bring it up for a vote. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Dave?
I think that is it, I appreciate your time. And don't forget, November 8th, it's going to be a beautiful day, and go enjoy the park.
Before we leave Park and Rec, I do want to announce that our EV charging station has been installed in the park. There's a picture of it, it's looking really good. We have two, two stations there. They are getting use. I mean, I've been over to the park and I've seen people park there, I parked there once myself. So I know, I know it is getting used, so. Me, you're seeing right there, that's just a month old, by the way. So in that press release, so I think, I think that's all I think we did for the township. If there's nothing else, I will motion to approve the Park and Rec report. Do I have a second?
So moved, David Collingwood.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, pass it. The, thank you, Dave, and thank you, Nate. The Conservation Committee report, Michael Schreymar, do you have a report for this evening? I think you're still on mute.
I think I'm unmuted.
Yeah.
Our September meeting, the Conservation Committee had a executive session, and there was no public meeting. Our next meeting will be November, and it'll be announced, I believe it's November 4th, because the Police Commission moved their meeting into the same date as ours. So we'll have a meeting in November.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else to report, although you did make a report, so I will ask for a motion to approve the Conservation Committee report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? A second? Okay, thank you. I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye, I'll second.
Thank you, we're all set. Commission reports. Chief Blake, it looks like it's, it looks like it's no shave November.
It's no shave November early, thank you, yes. The monthly calls for Penner's Little Police for September of 2020. The department handled 430 calls for service, 172 were in East Rock Hill and 258 in West Rock Hill. The department handled 13 traffic crashes, seven of those in East Rock Hill and six in West Rock Hill. Nine were reportable crashes and four were non-reportable. The department handled 44 crimes in East Rock Hill. The crimes are as follows, two theft cases, burglary, fraud, possession of marijuana, recklessly endangerment, criminal mischief, trespass. Eight ordinance violations in West Rock Hill, sex offense against a minor. Four theft cases, four fraud cases, one disorderly conduct, two DUI cases, one terroristic threat. One trespass, three ordinance violations, three dog law violations, four criminal mischief cases, and four harassment cases. The following charges were filed in September, recklessly endangering another person. Two charges of harassment, three charges of DUI, and three charges of disorderly conduct. The officers conducted 230 traffic enforcement details, 147 details on Old Bethune Pike. Officers issued seven verbal traffic warnings, 55 traffic citations and 63 written warnings. And officers also conducted 311 business checks. And Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to remind the board that this Saturday is our Drug Takeback Event from 10 to 2. Will be two takeback stations, there'll be one here at the Police Department and one at Grandview Hospital. And that's the police report.
Chief, are those going to be drive-in or do people get out of their cars and drop?
They are driving, yeah, they'll, I will be here at the station and Detective Lewis will be at Grandview Hospital. They'll drive in, we don't want anybody out of their car, coming into the station and, well, the box out there and I'll take the, you know, whatever's brought in and we'll put them in the box, so.
Okay, thank you. It's a great opportunity to clean out your medicine cabinets, folks.
Yes, it is.
And a nice, safe way to do it. So, are, David or Jay, do you have any questions for the chief?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the chief report. Do I have a second?
Second, David Collingwood.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Joint Rec Authority, we continue making fixes to the pool. I reported last month that we had dug out all the, the old cement where we had a lot of leaks in the bottom of the pool. We had dug out all the old cement and we brought in Gerhart Plumbing, who does the plumbing work for the pool. And Gerhart found that we had to cut out more. So he, he did cut out more in the three-foot area. The others were pretty close to where we, where Tony had left them. Tony Bogner, of course, is the one who came in and volunteered his time to cut them out. and volunteered his time to to cut them out. Um those repairs have all been made now. All new piping has been laid. The uh stone is in, the rebar's in. Tony and I, Tony Bogner and I went over yesterday. Tony determined how much cement it would need and Tony is working to get us cement and to get that in there. Um Tony, if you're on, I I didn't know, see if you joined or not, Tony, but um I can't thank you enough for the dedication you have to our our township. Um having said that, we've made a lot of changes to the pool, a lot of updates over the last five years. Uh the pool is fifty years old this year and and needs some work. Um as you, as we've mentioned in the last couple of meetings, uh COVID has taken a real toll on the pool as far as finances go. I had requested in the last couple of meetings a a an additional funding of nineteen thousand dollars from West Rock Hill because Sellersville had already given their nineteen thousand, so I I I will allow.
I'm hearing nothing.
You. What's that? David? Okay, um I will allow each of the supervisors to have something final to say about this. I don't want to go through the whole thing again because I think everybody's pretty much heard it. Um I I will, first of all, let me say this. I want to put this up.
Chairman, can you repeat? Um I I've got nothing from.
Okay, can you hear me now? David? David? Can you hear me now?
You're you're breaking.
I can hear you, Mr. Chairman, fine.
Can you hear me now, David?
I can, yes.
Okay, I was just saying, I was just giving a recap.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you start again?
Yes. I was just giving a recap.
I can hear you. Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes.
I can hear.
Yes. Yes, yes, we can.
Thank.
We can hear you. Um.
All right, thank you.
I gave a recap of what we did to correct the leaks in the pool. I think I sent you an email, you and Jay, an email earlier about that. Um and I I once again am requesting for the final time a nineteen thousand dollar donation to match what Sellersville did so that we can um we can keep the pool running through till next year and when we start collecting membership fees again. Um so I will, I here, I'm just going to put it out there. I would like to make a motion for West Rock Hill to give the additional nineteen thousand to keep the pool active and to make it, it is a community pool. So I will make that motion. So I would like someone to second the motion and then I will put it out for any final statements.
Uh David calling, but I would second the motion, but I want to have it followed up with some discussion.
Well, we can. What's the, it's now on the table as a motion, so now we can have a discussion, so Jay or David, whoever wants to start, you can go ahead.
I'll start, if you don't mind.
No, it's fine. Go ahead, Jay.
Okay, um as you know and are aware and it's on record that uh I do support the pool. However, I have been adamant about the pool funding itself. And you, Mr. Chairman, are on record publicly saying last month that if you did not have a unanimous decision on this, you would not push this forward. I do not believe the township should be contributing an additional nineteen thousand dollars. I believe and I'm quite confident that that Joint Rec Authority is capable of raising the money needed to fund that pool. That pool should be able to fund itself and make itself float. It is it is a standalone governing body. And every time, every year, it has come back to the township for taxpayer dollars to fund it because it can't fund itself. And I have given some great examples and ideas in including selling off the house when that was done to raise money to do some improvements. So it's not that I'm not willing or do I want to um support the pool is the fact, my simple fact is that I think that the pool should be able to run itself with a Joint Rec Authority of six members that are that are all members of that that can go out and generate revenue. That's my position. I am not supporting giving any more money than what we we are already giving, which in my opinion, we're giving more than what we should be giving. I wanted to cut it back to ten thousand dollars a year and it was increased from thirteen to fifteen thousand. Now you want another nineteen thousand. I do appreciate your efforts, Mr. Chairman. You have worked feverishly and at this pool and Tony's efforts and everybody involved. And and you've made some great strides, but I just do not believe we should be spending taxpayer dollars of this amount on that pool. That's just, that's just my opinion and I'm only one person. So thank you for the time.
Sure, and I appreciate your comments. David?
I would like to say that I think that this cost benefits the residents and the taxpayers of the township. And this is a community asset and it's for the citizens of the township and the township has supported this for over fifteen years, the joint venture with Sellersville Borough. Um as far as funding, and I'd like to finish. As far as funding, my decision when I became supervisor not to pay taxpayer-funded healthcare from the township more than covers the cost of what's being asked for. That's my, I'll finish.
Okay, thank you. And my final comments are this is the community pool. If you talk to, if you talk to Park City, if you talk to Doylestown or any of the other places, you'll find out community pools don't make money, they lose money, but it's there as a service for the community. And I just feel that because we are so far behind because of COVID that we need, we need to, we need to do this. Otherwise, the pool will just shut down. Um I've worked very hard over the last five years as chairman of a Joint Rec Authority to to bring down costs while repairing the pool with volunteer work, and we have done an exceptional job. And in the last two years, we have either come down to no additional money or only a few extra dollars, I believe. Jay, you're right. At the last meeting, I did say that I wanted the opportunity to make this a unanimous vote. Um that does not mean that at this meet, this current meeting, um I'm I'm still following that. That that was what something I was hoping to to do for the community to show full community support, but I understand your position. I accept your position. And um having put this up to vote now, I would like to put it out and just say, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Uh David calling with aye.
And opposed?
Opposed. Jay Kaiser.
I want to thank you all for your comments. Um I I understand how you both feel about it, but this is an icon in in West Rock Hill that is known all over the all over the state, really, because it's it's one of the original pools, so. Um having said that, the motion carries and that should be the end of the subject. All right, I have nothing else for for Park and Rec, I'm sorry, for a Joint Rec Authority, so uh can I get a motion to approve the Joint Rec Authority report?
So moved, David calling.
Uh do I get a second to approve the Joint Rec Authority report? I will make it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh Tax Collector Report, Suzanne Clark.
Good evening. Okay, for the month of October, I've collected two hundred and ninety-five dollars and eight cents in annual taxes. Um we are coming to an end of our year, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll get some more payments in. Um I just wanted to let everybody know that I will have extra collection hours on Friday, October thirtieth because our second installment is due for school taxes. Um school tax bill, uh postcards notifications also went out October sixteenth notifying all taxpayers who has have not paid. Um just giving them a friendly reminder that they are still in face, but will go into penalty November the first. Uh so those did go out last week. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for uh our tax collector?
I have none.
Okay, hearing none, I'll I'll ask for a motion to approve the Tax Collector Report.
I'll make that.
Uh thank you, Jay. Uh do I have a second, David?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 All right, next item, Engineers Report.
Sorry, forgot I was muted. Uh excuse me. Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item we have was the solar bids. Um remember, we authorized them for advertisement last month. We got the information out and had a bid opening uh last Thursday. Uh we had quite a bit of interest and received four bids in the end, uh which I believe there was a a spreadsheet in your packet for the for the bids. Um and in the bids, we included two different um uh two different issues. One was the essentially design and installation of the the system itself, and the second as an alternate was it's a cost for a twenty-five-year operation and maintenance contract. Uh I think uh Jim, you looked into the biz a little bit closer, but the schematic designs, I think, were all similar uh to what we had initially envisioned for the that rear corner of the building. Uh so if if for just the base bid, the installation of the system, Exact Solar uh was the low bidder at once one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Um the alternate, uh there's a glitch in the in the alternate bids. The the low bidder for the alternate was uh EIS Solar. Uh but when I looked into their bid further, I found out why they only bid twenty-two hundred dollars for the for the maintenance contract, and that's because uh they only put in a price for one year and wanted to negotiate the the rest of the year. So essentially, their their bid for the alternate is not the, not a responsive bid and and we we would have to throw that out. Uh those are the uh numbers we have and uh Jim, if you wanted to comment anymore on the documentation we got back.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Uh first of all, Steve, I want to thank you for all the work you did. I think you learned a lot about solar.
Thank you.
There was, there was a lot of work involved in this and Steve did an excellent job. As Steve said, we had four bids. Uh EIS is from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Uh RER Energy Group is from Reading, Pennsylvania. Exact Solar is from Yardley, Pennsylvania, and Solar State is from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. The bids ranged in price of a high of one hundred and ninety-five thousand down to one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight, which was the bid from Exact Solar. Um I just to tell you a little bit, uh Exact Solar has been in business since two thousand and five. It's a leading uh installer of residential and small commercial staller energy systems in Pennsylvania and New Jersey. It was founded by uh Mark Bortman and co-founded by Darra, I'm sorry, yeah Darra Bortman, his spouse, and they're both graduates of the University of Pennsylvania, and in fact, Mark is on on the call phone. Um Darra is also a board director of the American Solar Energy Society. Now, normally, I would put this up for a motion to accept it, but as they say on TV, wait, there's more. Um the there's a comments section in the bid proposal where people can add additional comments. And in their comments section, Exact Solar offered us another alternative way to pay through a lease agreement. Um it was not part of the original bid, but it was in there extra as an extra comment. Now we cannot use that as part of the bid, but since they won the bid being the lowest uh bidder, then we looked into it as an alternative. And we are still investigating that because it looks like there's a twenty percent reduction in cost if we go with a seven-year lease. So we are, we are definitely working with Exact Solar on that to find out, and that's a forty thousand dollar difference in cost. Uh there there are some other things in there that that we need to look at and make sure that we're happy with the bid and and our attorney just hasn't had a chance to do that yet this month, and I think we've all been up to our ears trying to get things done, so I'm trying to keep this so that we can uh keep it simple. Um I'm asking that we postpone the bids, that we defer defer coming in with a response tonight for one more month before we make a decision. And I think the decision is not going to be who we choose. The decision is going to be which way do we go? Do we go with the one hundred and sixty-nine thousand straight payment? Or we do we get through a lease agreement for seven years, which would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand? But there's a statement that says at the end we would have to pay based on a uh uh market value, and that that's what we're working on. We're trying to determine what that market value would be so we know what exactly what the payment would be at the end and to see what kind of savings this would be. So that's about as clear as I can put it. Um Mary, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, just by by way of explanation. Um under the second-class township code, you have to bid many contracts. There are exceptions to the competitive bid requirement, and one of the exceptions is to execute a contract for electricity. What the lease agreement that was proposed by by the low bidder does is it it's a contract whereby um we lease the system to us and they provide electricity free of charge for the seven years, and then at the end of seven years um we we buy it back for a certain sum of money. Um the reason that that reduces the price is that we cannot take advantage of federal tax credits, but the the low bidder can. And so when they submitted their their notes, um Jim reached out to them and got a copy of the lease and I and I've looked at it and I have some questions about it, but we couldn't work through all the questions before tonight's meeting. So because there's a potential of saving the township, you know, forty thousand dollars, um Jim thinks it might be a good idea, and the the exact wording of this for any motion that you might offer is to postpone the award of bids until, and then you're going to give a specific date and time. So in our case, it's November. Greg, do you have that? Next meeting date? Third Wednesday would be the fourth, the eleventh, the seventh, the the twenty-fifth, or the twenty, the twenty?
The eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Okay. Anything else, Mary?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Unless you have more questions.
Okay, um.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Jay.
To Mary, to Mary, uh um under under there, it says the uh three twenty-five-year operation and maintenance contracts. Are those contracts that you we have to purchase with if we go with those bidders? Or how does that work? Because I was under the impression there was no maintenance regarding these panels.
Um I don't, I don't think there there is maintenance of panels, but you want, I think you want people to come out every now and then and just check on it, make sure everything's running right. And so that was an um an ad alternate, so if that's your, that's a policy decision, whether you want to go with the ad alternate and and get the, what was it, Steve? How many years was the maintenance contract in the ad all?
Uh twenty-five, twenty-five years.
Right.
And and we'd have to pay that additional fifty thousand dollars besides a hundred and sixty-nine, which would be two nineteen, right?
No, um if you chose to lock into a maintenance contract at this time, that's the price they offered. We we
Okay.
Through that, I don't want to say threw it into bid. We included that in the bid just to see where those numbers might come in.
Um okay.
But there are warranty provisions within the contract itself already. There's twenty-five-year warranties on the panels, ten years on on other components and workmanship, so it it's not a necessity. We we just wanted to see what kind of uh offers people would make if we considered a warranty program right off the bat.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Okay, um having said that, um I know Mark is on. Mark, I do you have any words, Mark Bortman? Do you have any words you would like to just add in at this point? I mean, you're here. you're here.
Thanks for, thanks for giving me the opportunity here. No, it looks like a great project. I think it's a way to have Rock Hill lead the county as showing people how they can help not only save the environment, but also save money on their electric bills. Hoping that it works out, that we can try and provide the system to the township at the lowest cost possible.
Thank you very much. So I would like to make a motion to postpone the awarding of the contract until the November 8th meeting to allow us time to work through the lease agreement document.
The 18th.
The 18th. I'm sorry, November 18th meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, great. Thank you, Jay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Did we lose David?
Aye.
Oh, okay. All right.
I don't know, I just, go ahead. But it's all right, we're past that.
Okay. Okay. It approved, it passed, so we will make the decision on November 18th to go either with the full payment or with the lease agreement. Thank you. All right.
Okay.
We want to.
Yeah, continuing, continuing under my report, then we have Magnetic Specialties. You have a letter in your packet. This is for the completion of their initial construction and start of the maintenance period. If you recall, this is an industrial building out on Keystone Drive. They constructed a storage accessory pole barn in the rear of the site. So we did our final inspection. All the improvements are in per plan. So we're recommending that you accept it as complete and start the 18-month maintenance period with reduced escrow.
Do we need to take a motion and approve that, I guess?
Yes, please.
All right, can I get a motion to the Magnetic Specialties LD 617 as complete?
I would make that motion, too.
Okay, Jay, you had a second?
I'll second it. Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, passes. Steve?
Hey, thanks. Next item, also in your packet, there was a memo regarding the Frankenfield subdivision. I thought that was a little two-lot subdivision. On Deadwiler Road. Not Deadwiler, it's on the, what can I think of the name of the road there now?
Climber.
Climber, I'm sorry. Climber Road. He was in the maintenance period. That was completed some time ago. We took a look at it. Everything is still in satisfactory condition. And we're recommending that the township accept the project as complete and release the remaining escrow funds less than any cost due to the township. So we'd be, I'd recommend that you do a motion to approve that also.
Can I get a motion to approve the Frankenfield subdivision?
Yes, I made that motion.
Okay, I heard Jay first. David, you have? Yeah, okay. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Catch Basin Roads.
Okay, yeah, the last item was Catch Basin Road. That was the other bid that we had out this month. That's for the demolition of the original Sellersville Water Works facility that we acquired when we purchased the Catch Basin property. We had a lot of interest in this project. We had an open house a few weeks ago, had a lot of contractors out, and we ended up with 13 bids.
Wow, wow.
With extremely low, low bidder, BRB contractors for 52,000. We anticipated it being closer to $200,000. So we, that's up for your approval tonight. They are a known, they've been in the business for a long time. They're a known entity. They're not somebody new to demolition. And they submitted all the proper documentation with their bids.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve BRB contractors to do the demolition work at Catch Basin Road.
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. The second?
David Collingwood. Steve, then you're recommending that we take the the $52,000 bid, correct?
Yes. I mean, you don't, yeah, on their public bid, you don't have a lot of options to go to other bidders, but I see nothing to not accept this bid subject to their bonds and insurance.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Motion passes.
And that's all I have unless there's any other questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the engineers' report? I'll make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, okay, thank you. Talking about being on these phones, we can't look at each other and see who's going to do it. Okay, thank you, Jay. I'll make a second. Do we have a? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, solicitors' report. You're on mute, Mary.
I'm very sorry. Under the solicitors' report, we have two items this evening. The first is a no parking ordinance for Old Mill Road at the last meeting. You asked that I draft a no parking ordinance for both sides of Old Mill Road. You have, I have done that. It's been advertised, and it is properly before you for your consideration this evening. And Greg, I can't see the bottom of the agenda to say what the ordinance number would be.
It's not on there.
That's all right. I have a, hold on. I had the agenda up somewhere else. So it's ordinance number 242.
242, okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve the parking ordinance on Old Mill Road, ordinance number 242?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jay. I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
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 Great, and it passes. And Mary, continue?
Yes, at the last meeting, you reviewed the plan of ProCom, which is an amendment to what used to be the Westco Plan that you approved several years ago. Based on your discussion in the Engineer and Planning Commission recommendations, I prepared an approval resolution, which is in your packets and before you tonight for consideration. If you were inclined to adopt the resolution, the resolution number would be Resolution 2020-16.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2020-16 for the ProCom roofing?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I will second if you can hear me.
I can hear you. Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 Great, and it passes. Mary?
I have nothing else to offer, Mr. Chairman, unless you have questions for me.
I have none. I'm not hearing anything from others, so I'll make a motion to accept the solicitors' report. Do I have a second?
I think David wants to second it.
I think poor David's got a problem. David, I think you need to talk to Chris Durston. He got a new modem. Now you need to get one. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, solicitors' report passes. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Township managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the first draft of the 2021 budget. You do not need to take any action. Just wanted to make note of it that it has been passed on to the Board of Supervisors. And the second item, if Sherry would go to the next slide, is Bucks County has a lead-based hazardous paint program. There's a phone number and an email address for people who would like to grant to remove lead-based paint. I just got this the other day, so I figured I would include it in the PowerPoint presentation. If anyone has any questions, they're more than welcome to email me at glipincott@westrockhilltownship.org or email thebuckscounty.org, the HCD at buckscounty.org.
How do we get this out to the people in the community? You can put it on our website.
If it's on our website, I'm also going to tweet it out. I thought I would include it as part of this presentation tonight.
Okay.
Just hope to get the word out. If anybody, there's grants available to get rid of lead paint in your home.
Great, okay.
And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Does anyone have a question for our manager?
David Collingwood, if you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Concerning the first draft of the budget, when will the latest updated revised healthcare cost information be available? I think that's something we really need to revisit.
The first official will probably be towards the end of November. It's usually after the public advertisement of the budget. I got a 10% increase in health insurance. However, I budgeted 8% because it usually comes in a little bit lower than what they quote, but that was just a verbal. It's not, I get the paperwork, I will forward it immediately to the board. However, it most likely will not be to the board even in your November meeting.
Thank you. But I really think that it's important that we have a chance to look at it and review it and maybe make some changes. In my opinion.
Okay, well, well, we have to wait till we get it, David. And then
Right, I understand that.
And make a, you know, have a good discussion about it. So, okay, thank you. Anything else, David?
No, I'm done. That's fine.
Jay, you have anything?
No, I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Township Managers' Report?
I'll make the motion.
So moved, David Collingwood.
Okay, David, you're the second. Okay, you don't have, we know. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And it passes. Is there any old business?
I would like the opportunity to bring something up, Mr. Chairman. That I don't know if it's been put on there. The the moving of the voting that we are, I'm not in favor of, but it was made, the decision was made without our without our input to the church. Could we, could we possibly have that put on the sign at the park there? Where we usually advertise things on the on the sign park?
Well, actually, on the sign park, I think Suzanne has an update on this, but Suzanne, do you want to, are you still on, Suzanne? You want to tell Jay what all's going on with that? If you're still here.
I saw her leave earlier.
Okay, all right. So here's what's going on, Jay. The I think, I think the park sign is going to be used for something for the park at that point. But the big sign that's in front of the building right now for the recycling or for the shredding event, it was used for the recycling event. I think, David, we had permission to keep that until Election Day and
That is correct.
Yes, so we're going to put it right there, Jay. We're going to put all the information sign, so it's even bigger than the park sign. And we're
Yeah, good, okay.
Yeah, that worked?
Yep, that works great. Thank you.
Yeah, and just for clarification, Jay, that decision to move the polling place was done by the Bucks County election board, not by any, right, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you. Is there any other old business? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Does anyone have any new business?
I have none.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. Greg, do you have any written public comment?
No, but I think there's three people that would like to give public comment. Cliff Call.
We can do that now. We just don't know if there's any written comment for, Cliff, you want to go first? Thank you for joining us.
Very much. I had a conversation with Greg earlier today, and I'm sorry, I did try to get on early and question the agenda because there has been a change on the FERC docket regarding the Adelphia compressor. They have given Adelphia permission to start construction on that. And, you know, I understand you keep you keep on saying that you're legally bound and you you can't say anything, but that's something that affects the public. You know, that's, it's more than, this is beyond litigation that, you know, this is something that's happening in our township. And FERC has has given them permission to start. So, I mean, I know you're not going to say anything, but that's really what I'd like to hear, what the supervisors have to say about that. This, you know, very much concerns us.
Well, it can concerns me, too, to be honest with you, because, you know, I'm a resident. But I do want to add that we did get permits, which were rejected, and I think Greg's made that public knowledge. But as far as as what FERC is doing, I know that there's nothing we can do about that right now. All we can do is keep fighting the fight, just like you are, Cliff, so.
Can you expand on that? I didn't exactly understand what you meant by the permits. Greg, Greg didn't tell me anything about that on the phone.
I think that's public knowledge, right? I hope.
Duffy applied for permits, and I put the rejection letter on the website under the Adelphia. There's all that information up there. It's on the Adelphia website. They applied for building and zoning permits, and they were denied.
I think
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah. In the interest of the transparency, Greg denied the permits, and Adelphia's contractor wrote back and said, basically, you misunderstood. We were just filing as a courtesy. You know, we didn't really need your approval. So, so it's not as if you applied for a permit to to build the structure on your property, and Greg denied the permit. That would mean that you couldn't begin construction. It doesn't have the same meaning when a project is under the governance of FERC.
Okay.
There's no legal action that can be taken.
Well, I think we, the township, through its attorney, already took an action asking FERC for a stay, and FERC denied it. That happened months ago.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Cliff, and I did want to get some comments in there, too, so I appreciate you bringing that up. Is someone else, Greg, you said was on?
Regina Schreymeyer.
Hi, thank you. This is Regina Schreymeyer, Sterners Road, West Rock Hill. I just wanted to say, based on the number of people in West Rock Hill, a $19,000 pool expense comes to about $3.80 per taxpayer, which I think is far less than the $40,000 a year we pay for health insurance for Jay and his wife. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Greg?
The last one is from John Swerdruck. I will read it. What is the payback period for the proposed solar system, including the maintenance contract and buyout after the seven-year lease? From John Swerdruck.
Okay, I can I can answer that, John. Right now, if if we take the full proposal, it'll probably be between 13 and 14 years because we can take the S-Rex along with that. And what I did was, you know, I have solar at my house, so I knew exactly, I knew that the system we're putting in is six times bigger than my system, so I looked at the S-Rex I got for the last six years and determined approximately, you know, six times what I got was what the township would get back. We're looking at about probably 14 years, excuse me, in that vicinity. If we take, if we use the full plan, if we had the reduced amount of money through the lease agreement, I think we're looking more like nine or 10, maybe, somewhere in there. I'm just giving you vague numbers because we don't have exact numbers yet to work with. But we're looking probably, let's, I'll be conservative and say 10 years, maybe, based on the electric we're using now and the fact that all of that electric use we have now would be considered part of the payback. Does that answer your question, John? John's on mute.
Yes, thanks, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Either one, I think, is well within our range when we're looking at a system that has a life expectancy, we're told, of about 40 years. The maintenance contract for the, yeah, the the maintenance contract that comes the, yeah, the the contract, the maintenance contractor comes with the panels is for twenty-five years, but that has nothing to do with whether they fail or not. It has to do with, and it's a way I must explain to me, the amount of performance they have after twenty-five years. They have to be performing at least eighty percent after twenty-five years. And I'm told that the newer panels will go approximately forty years. So in that forty years, we would expect to save a half a gallon of electric. And that's, that's just some numbers that I put together.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Are there any other comments, Greg?
No, none. No more.
Okay. Well, I have nothing else. I thank you all for coming tonight. We look forward to the meeting with you next month. If you have any comments, you can always reach us through the township. So I'll call for adjournment of the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. And do I have a second, David?
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 And we will adjourn now into executive session. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.